Most important things we can teach all children to say. Please, thank you, and you're welcome. So Karen, my message to you tonight is please savor and enjoy every moment of your retirement. It is extremely well deserved. Please take the time for yourself. Thank you not only for all the kindnesses you've shown me, for the advice, the words of wisdom, and the encouragement you've given me, and the comfort you have shared with me, but also for all the things you've done for so many other people in and out of this system, selflessly giving of yourself. You are welcome to anything I can ever do for you, anything. I recall some of the first words you ever said to me. Welcome to the board. I could immediately tell that you sincerely meant that. I am sure that Karen has made every new board member feel that way. I remember when they decided to have her sit at the board with us, at the board table with us. I was so happy that she was sitting next to me. I believe anyone who knows Karen Jones would be hard pressed to find any negative thing to say about her. She is dependable, smart, loyal, pleasant. I could literally go on and on and on listing her positive attributes. I brought a little something to the board members and David Lewis. I believe you will all agree, Pat alluded to the word, she used the word glue, so I knew I was okay then. But I believe they will all agree that Karen is the glue that holds this group of hardworking, honorable, public servants together. This bottle of school glue represents her many duties that go unseen and unspoken, yet hold together the many working elements that cause this board to run smoothly. Much of what goes on would not go on without her efforts. I know where Karen sits, Dr. Lewis, so you have a few extras. You get that, right? Okay. Karen, I would like to quote E.B. White. "You have been my friend." That in itself is a tremendous thing. As time goes by, I hope you will always know that you are valued, appreciated, admired, and respected, and above all, that you are loved.
Thank you so much, Ms. Harris. Ms. A.J. Senior. Athavia, A.J. Senior.
Athavia, thank you, Pat. Everyone has pretty much said everything of how I feel about Karen, except for one thing. To me, she's family, and I consider her family. I will miss her, and as Beth said, when you come onto the board, she welcomes you so warmly, and she just makes you feel right at home. I only want to say, Karen, to you, I want you to enjoy your retirement, and remember, every day is a holiday. There are six Saturdays and one Sunday, okay? And in retirement life, it has no set routine. You let each day unfold as it should. Enjoy, enjoy, live each day, and be happy. And I just want to say, I'm gonna miss you. As your coworker now, I'm gonna miss you. And I tell you that all the time, since you told me you're gonna retire. But truly, watching you go to the elevator, I feel like a piece of me will be gone now because you made this building. So thank you, and happy retirement.
Thank you, Ms. Senior. Mr. Wells. Mr. John Wells.
Good evening. I want to thank the Board of Education for the great leadership that you're providing for this community. With assistance of the superintendent, y'all work together marvelously. And I've wanted to call and congratulate you several times. I wanted to bring something to the sweetest girl I know now, Karen Jones. Karen, I wanted to get something as colorful, and as nice, and as pretty as you are. But I had to settle for this little three-flower bouquet at the shop. So I'm gonna bring it to you now. I also have a congratulation card on your retirement, which I'm gonna give you at the present time as well.
John the gentleman.
When the superintendent decided to downsize that office, I think there was two ladies working in there at the time. One of them retired, he decided not to replace her and just give the whole thing to Karen. And I was thinking at the time, Mr. Superintendent, you probably may want to keep that second person because that office is important and there's a lot of work. But when Karen took over, it was absolutely seamless. It was like she just born in that job and took it on. Karen, you did a marvelous job while you were there. I want to say thank you for all the times that you helped me, you know, with reservations, and then tickets, and expense reports, and this council agenda that you have here that I'd ask questions or something, and you wouldn't know the answer or either get it. And I have never asked her for something that she didn't right away get, and she's always been so courteous and so nice. So I just wanted to say that I hope that your retirement is great for you. I know the school district is gonna miss you, and I miss you. And I remember sometimes when my sweet wife Cherry, we would be off somewhere, and she would say, "Well, remember Karen." And so she would pick up some little something and bring it to you in the office. And, but you know, I'm kind of disappointed at the same time because hearing all these other people speak about things you did for them, and I thought you was just being extra special to me. But I know that's not possible for Karen Jones. She's the same for everybody, and it's a great day. And the school district is gonna have a hard time replacing you. And, Mr. Superintendent, I don't know who you got now, but there was a National Headhunter outfit that we got to bring you down here. So if you want to hire somebody to replace Karen, get that same company, and I'm sure you'll get a good result from it. Anyway, Karen, have a great retirement, and I love you. We're gonna miss you. Have a great day. God bless you.
Thank you, John Wells. Ms. Maureen Marvets. No, you're not last.
Okay.
I see Mr. Whiteside is here.
I am absolutely amazed that with everything that has been said, that my words were not picked. And just show that there's more depth to Karen still. So when we were told that we could speak a word or two, I came up with 10. And I would like to share those with Karen tonight. The first one is being honest. I just cannot speak of her character higher than that. Honest, true, dutiful, devoted, caring, generous, integrity, beautiful, compassionate. And my last word I picked was magnanimous. And I have a prop, too.
Oh yeah, that's the kind you wear. Thank you, Ms. Marvets. Mr. Fife Whiteside? You snuck in around the back.
I don't have anything prepared to say. And that's probably a good thing. But what I was, what I do think about Karen is that in life, you run into people who, when they leave, you say, "Golly, gosh, I'm so glad they left." And then you run into people that when they leave, they say, "I didn't know how much we needed you, and I'm so sorry you're gone." And that's you. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Whiteside. And thank you all for coming back to bereave with us and to share your well wishes and sentiments. It means a lot to Karen, I know. And it was really good to see each and every one of you, and thank you for the service that you do. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention Ms. Suzanne Phillips, Dr. Phillips' wife. Thank you so much for coming out because you were always the planner for all of our activities and making sure that we, when we were out of town, that we stayed together and bonded. So we appreciate you two for coming out. If you want to say a word, you are welcome to do so. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you so much. And you all really just summed up how a lot of us feel, except that we're gonna talk to Karen some more about later on, yeah. But Robyn Pennick did send an email, and I appreciate Karen sharing it with me. But just a few words that sums up everything that you all have said. And there are some few, very few people whom I shall never forget and for whom I am eternally grateful. And you, my dear, she's talking to Karen, are one of those very, very few people. And she is truly the glue and our rock. And Karen, we want to give you your flowers now. And I remember when Mary Sue was recognizing you when she retired, her daddy was here, if he was here, he'd stand up and say, "That's how I raised her." So thank you for all that you do, and we appreciate you. Would you like to say something? Of course.
Yes, I want to thank everyone. This has not been a job. It's been a delight to come to work every day, something different. All my wonderful mentors, beautiful educators that love this district as I do. And I thank them for that. It's been a joy, it's been amazing, and the memories, I wish I could share them with others. But thank you all for coming, and thank you for your beautiful, kind words. I appreciate it. Thank you.
That was a part of our moment of personal privilege. Mr. Cantrell.
Before all the old board members and former superintendents, y'all being here was the only thing, was y'all must stay till the end of the meeting.
Thank you all so very much. We're moving to our public agenda with Ms. Elamene. Yes, ma'am, you're the only one on the public agenda. Would you like to? We're gonna... I know it seems like we have dead air because we are live streaming, but we are waiting patiently on Ms. Elamene.
Well, forgive me. Yeah, it's for the board. I wanted the water because I've learned you could take a sip of water and you can avoid emoting all over the place. But this is a shocker, Ms. Jones, a shock. When I emailed Ms. Jones last week to ask to be on the public agenda, never in my wildest dreams did I know you would be leaving. When the superintendent looked at his bio on Wednesday, he was like, "I don't know where you got that." I said, "You know Ms. Jones is on it?" And so as soon as I asked her, it was like, seemed like within an hour, bam, picture, bio. And all those other bios in there, I was struggling to the deadline to get them. Soon as you asked, Ms. Jones, bam. And I know it's gonna be real impossible to replace her because Ms. Jones has such integrity and fairness. Even in all of the tumultuous times of the board, she was like the calm inside of the hurricane. And she always stayed on her job. You call about the bylaws, you call about anything, and there she was. So I will talk to you because I got something for you. You like bonefish, don't you? I know the superintendent loves bonefish. But at any rate, I don't want my five minutes to run out because you need to have all kinds of things to do while you're on your retirement. But what I passed out to the board is the Parents Summit Program booklet. Dr. Lewis was fantastic. All those parents were asking him all the tough questions, and he kept rising to the occasion. I gave him one little softball thing on the MTSS, and everybody was so glad. And then he arranged for Dr. Nelson to come back in the afternoon to talk to the parents. It was a beautiful day. And we'll be back at Wilson tomorrow with a little Thanksgiving thing. Piggly Wiggly gave us two $25 gift certificates. And I purchased 12. I've given out four on the 10th, but we'll be giving out 10 $25 gift certificates. And I understand this is your district, Ms. Williams. Wilson is in your district, is that true? I would appreciate it if you could stop by tomorrow around 3:00 so that the parents can meet you and have a real photo op with you. I asked Ms. Jackson to stop by, but let me just show you one thing. Ms. Jackson spoke about... Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Jackson spoke about equality versus equity. She had a huge poster. She left it with us. I went to Office Depot, had it duplicated, and had several smaller ones so that we could do the tabletop conversation around the difference between equality and equity. It's one of our strategic objectives that everyone would understand. For those who need more, they must get more. Equality is pretty much impossible to achieve because we're all different. But we know what we want the students to be able to do. High expectations for all of them. So you got to give all of them what they need. You can't expect, this picture is so telling, with a little child that doesn't have what he needs. That's repeated over and over and over again in school districts all around the country because you've got to strive for equity. Equity. I gave Ms. Jackson a small one like this so that she could use it to talk because she's kind of an expert on understanding this subject. And I've been talking to her about this for years, and she's real clear. In her district, she knows equity. Strive for equity. Well, my time is up, but I'll see you again. I don't want to be emoting all over the place, so I'm gonna go. See you, Ms. Jones.
Wilson is not in my district, but it is in my neighborhood, so I, that I work in, so I...
Well, whose district is it?
I believe it's Dr. Sly's.
Oh.
But, Wilson Apartments, yeah.
Wilson Homes?
Yeah.
Housing Authority?
On 35th Street.
Well, 35th, yeah.
Yeah.
Off of River Road, in that area?
Yeah, it's not, it's not in my district, but it...
That is Sly.
Yeah, it is Sly. But if you, if you'd like, I mean, you call me tomorrow and give me some details if I can, I'll stop by because it is in one of the neighborhoods that my, you know, Neighborhoods works in, but it's not in my district, so I just want to make sure I was clear.
Well, you know, I tried to reach you so that you could do a Neighborhoods presentation at the thing. I'm sorry you couldn't be there, it would have been helpful. But if you could stop by, and any of you can stop by to see what's happening at Wilson Homes and how difficult it is.
Thank you, Ms. Elamene.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Unbelievable, Ms. Jones.
All right. We do have an action item, and board members, this is our time that we can pour our accolades on to Ms. Jones. But I would like a motion to pass this resolution that I have here. Moved by Ms., moved by Ms. Chambers, seconded by Ms. Williams. And the resolution says, "Whereas Ms. Karen P. Jones began her career with the Muskogee County School District October 1980 and will be retiring on November 30 of 2021 with 41 years of service. Whereas during Ms. Jones' employment, she was promoted through the ranks from payroll specialist to teacher certification specialist. Whereas in 1990, Ms. Jones was promoted to serve as executive assistant to the superintendent for policy development and student services. Whereas in 1992, Ms. Jones was promoted to serve as executive assistant to the board and superintendent of education. Whereas beginning in 1992, Ms. Jones served alongside the leadership styles of six superintendents of education, two of which were superintendent emeritus, and learned from their principled focus on student achievement and their dedication to education that was strong enough to withstand pressure from factions and individuals. Whereas in November 1993, Ms. Jones said it was the crowning jewel to be promoted to serve as executive assistant to the first elected school board the board had previously been appointed by the grand jury. Whereas Ms. Jones served with the board and superintendent in 1997 during the first special purpose local auction, Sales Tax, the SPOS, a 1% sales tax that was passed by local voters, resulting in $148 million in revenue for capital improvements, and has served during each of the five passages of the SPOS. Whereas Ms. Jones, a product of the Muskogee County Public School System, furthered her education at Columbus Technical College. Whereas Ms. Jones was a devoted daughter to her mother and continues to be a devoted daughter to her father. Whereas Ms. Jones is honored to have served with many board members and superintendents who entrusted her with this unique opportunity. Whereas Ms. Jones has pioneered through the district with dedication, insight, common sense, and courage, and love for every child, and concern for every employee as she has earned the respect and gratitude of this board, educators, board attorneys, media partners, and the many citizens who know of her work. Now therefore, it is resolved that the Muskogee County Board of Education does hereby commend and thank Ms. Karen P. Jones for her service to the Muskogee County School District. Be it so resolved this 15th day of November 2021." Are there any questions and comments before we take our vote?
Can I ask you to repeat the dates of when she started with the district?
October 1980.
And how many years is that?
Forty-one, forty-two? It is very noteworthy, and, you know, there are just not sufficient words at all. Not sufficient words. Mr. Cantrell, did you want to say anything? You had asked me earlier.
I would love to start first, too. Karen, the first day I was elected, you called me up and congratulated me to be on the board. I mean, that just spoke words about you instantly, and then I got to know you. And I say this literally. When I say she probably is the best, most beautiful woman I have ever seen dressed at every time I've ever seen her, is Karen Jones. I mean, every time, you've always been impeccable. And if we ever need anything, or if I ever need anything, you're always the first person I call, and Karen is always there. We love you, Karen, we'll miss you. If I could give you a portable building, I would, but you already have an action building in your backyard, so... So no need trying to go there. But you know, always know that if you ever need anything, that I'm a phone call away and glad to help you out any way that we ever could. And just, we will miss you so much.
Karen, I just, I'm not gonna repeat everything. I will use one word I don't think I heard enough, and that was loyal. And to me, when you speak about a person's integrity, being able to say that they're loyal above everything else to me is an attribute that speaks to your soul and your integrity. And I know you because you are loyal. When I served as the chair of the school board, you were always there, 100% for whatever I needed. You made the job so much easier. And no matter how tough it got, you always had a smile on your face. You always looked at me, no matter what, and you smiled and said, "It's gonna be all right." And you were always correct, and I want to thank you for all of that that you did.
Ms. Karen, you know, when Madam Chair announced her retirement, I know you heard me say that I'm not clapping. And the reason I said I'm not gonna clap is because I'm in panic mode right now. I just can't imagine the board without you. And when, I think it was Ms. Harris came up with her props, I was a little concerned. But when she stated, you know, that you are the glue that keeps everything together, that's absolutely true. that keeps everything together, that's, that's absolutely true. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything that you have done for me, for the board, for our children. I, I just, I thank you.
Karen, I just simply want to say you truly are a, an important part of our governance team. Um, I don't think people realize what goes on behind the scenes, um, but that's, that's priceless. And, um, I want to thank, say thank you for everything you did for me coming onto the board. Um, you have all these ideas in your head when you come into, onto the board. And Karen sort of slowly walks you into, um, your role. If I could say that. She sort of helps you realize, um, the job that's been put before you. And she does it with love and with kindness, um, and truly, you will be missed. You are a part of this team, so we have a, a pillar for the Muskogee County School District that has been, gonna be gone. But, um, I hope that you are just a phone call away. And you know I'm a history buff, and you have all this history about the Muskogee County School District. Whenever you have a question about how something was done, when it was done, when it was passed, you were always there with an answer. And that just, I just don't know if that can be replaced. But I want to thank you for your many years of service. Thank you for, um, helping develop me into the board member I am today. I truly appreciate that, and I appreciate all you've done.
Karen, I really cannot begin as everybody else to say thank you. I don't mean to say anything about my age, but I realize that you have been working this job since I was seven years old. And that just astounds me, and it shows again why, because I, in looking at you, we would never know that. Just want to say, um, a word that kept coming to me while everybody was talking was omniscient. And I looked it up because I wanted to make sure I had it right, and it said, infinite awareness, understanding, and, and insight, and that is utility. Um, you're also just a pure delight, the purest motivations in wanting to better our district, and just delight in how calming and graceful you always are. You are loved very much and will be missed, but we will probably still haunt you some.
Karen, I'm, I'm hesitant to say much of anything because I know I'll get emotional. You and I go back such a very, very, very long way together. I can't think of a single time when I didn't need big help that you didn't come with the biggest of possible helps. God knows I will miss you. Thank you.
As the newest board member and probably the most nervous because I came on my own, everybody was like, "Just wait. When you meet Karen, it'll all make sense." And I was nervous. I thought, "She can't be as wonderful as everybody has told me." I mean, I had a thirty-minute conversation saying, "If you need her at two o'clock in the morning, you call her and she will come and she will help you and she will be there." And you exceeded what anybody had ever even said about you. You are grace in the walking form. You made me being able to come in kind of nervous and the newbie, I mean, I have four months under my belt. You calmed me down and you walked me through all the training I'd missed over the time and all I can say is you're a blessing to anybody who even has a glimpse to know you. So I'm jealous I didn't know you as long as others, but you have been a blessing and you will be missed.
Thank you.
I need to get closer before Mrs. Green says something about me not talking loud enough. And this is an occasion that I do want to speak, uh, loud enough so that Karen could hear me say thank you for everything that you've done for me. Like, um, Dr. Sly, uh, I have needed a lot of help. I have challenges with technology, and, and you have always been there for me. And, um, we've all heard a lot of one words, three words, ten words, or all the very, all the different words that have described you. What I think is special about you is, uh, what discussion I had about my own mother. As I talked to my daughter, um, I was telling her that my mom was special because she had nine children. And with each of her nine kids, she was able to make nine kids seem special. She individualized all nine of us, and to me, I tell her, that's a very hard job to do. And what you have done, Karen, is made all of the nine school board members seem special. And that is very, very hard to do. We have had lots of challenges, challenges, and you have been there. And you were, as Beth said, the glue that settled everything down. So I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I love you.
Thank you.
Well, I have the great, um, distinction of being the superintendent you're leaving on. So I appreciate that. But all that said, all kidding aside, um, you know, everything's been said that could possibly be said. Other than the fact that I, you know, to, to kind of piggyback on what Kia said, she has such a great way about you, Karen, about guiding people. I could not think about doing this job without your guidance every day. And she does it in such a gentle way. She'll say, "Have you thought about? You might want to consider..." Which is a red flag going off, "Don't do that, stupid." She's so pleasant when she says it with such grace and dignity. But I will say that we have something, we've developed a mission, vision, and values in our district that undergird and support that mission and vision. And I want to just read this because I want you to understand that you personify and embody the values that we developed several years ago now. And it says, "The M C S D will foster a healthy organization where we embrace equity and diversity. We hold ourselves and others to the same high standards. We commit to continuous learning and improvement. We treat everyone with dignity and respect as we serve the needs of others." That, to me, encapsulates everything about you, in your role, working with me and with our board. And if I could take your picture and put above these values, you indeed personify every one of those core values. I thank you. I will miss you. We're gonna all be having a luncheon to give our farewell, so this won't be the only thing we'll be doing for Karen, obviously. But just want you to know that I think the greatest thing anybody can say has been written in scripture, which is, "Well done, good and faithful servant." Well done.
And for anybody who's wondering why we're taking all this time, it's because it's Karen Jones and she deserves, uh, more than, than these few moments. And I tell you, I've been in panic mode ever since she sent the letter. I, I, I have not gotten any work done on my day job. Calling and trying to, we're on our own in December, okay? We're on our own at the next board meeting. Um, but we, we, we're, we're grateful, and I'm truly grateful for every single thing, every single phone call, every single word of advice, every single snatching me off the edge, um, that you've done over the years. And you do that so gracefully with everybody and with the parents that call through there, and you just don't even break a sweat. It's quite remarkable, and we are, we can learn so much from your kind of patience and gentility. So I will continue to call you until we see what else you can do to, to, to come and, and, and help us out. So we thank you, Karen. We love you tremendously, um, for everything.
I, I just have one question, Madam Chair. You, you're not changing your cell phone number, right?
That's the district phone that she can keep. How about that?
So, so let me, let me, I want, I want this on record. We will not be calling Ms. Jones for thirty days because state law does not allow us to contact her in any kind of official business for thirty days, so. So I just want to put that on record.
Yeah, we're on our own for December. But, but being Karen, she has already prepared everything that we could possibly need. So when we go to our training, you need to take everything with you. We will not have a Karen Jones to call and get something to make sure we get all of our hours. I just want to give you all that reality check. Take every, take everything you need with you so we can make sure we receive and earn our credits. All right, so we, we do, what about her phone number? We, we gonna have to call her on her bat phone. Yeah. She's gonna keep the same number, unless somebody objects. Anybody object? I didn't think so. Okay. All right, so we do, do need to take a vote, a hand vote on the resolution. Thank you for reminding me. All in favor? Yes. All in favor, clap. Yeah, I would call that unanimous. So back to the school board, the school district business. Item five point zero one, superintendent is recommending, um, the sale of the property at five one four Morris Road. That's Tillinghurst. There's motion by Ms. Buckner, second by Ms. Jackson. Are there any questions? As it was discussed in executive session. We are ready to vote now. We gonna roll this through. Ms. Buckner has a disclaimer. While we're waiting on that to pop up. Uh-oh, Ms. Buckner hit you.
We have thoroughly discussed all these items, so if it appears that we are moving quickly through the items, please know that they were discussed in our work session on, uh, last week.
Thank you so very much. That passes. Five point zero two is the resolution, uh, capital outlay projects. Motion, motion by Ms. Williams, second by Ms. Chambers, um, to approve the resolution to withdraw selected schools from the entitlement application. So on our agenda, are there any questions? We're ready to vote now. That passes. Item five point zero three is request for easement adjacent to East Columbus Magnet Academy, twenty foot wide, twenty feet wide sanitary sewer easement. Motion by, all right, Ms. Williams, second by Ms. Buckner. Are there any questions? We're ready to vote now. That passes. Item five point zero four is a change order increase. Motion by Ms. Chain, Ms. Williams, second by Ms. Chambers to approve the additional funds for unforeseen sewer problems at, uh, for Jordan High School ADA parking lot. Are there any questions? We're ready to vote now. That passes. And then lastly, we have our consent agenda. Motion by Ms. Chambers, second by Ms. Buckner. Are there any questions? Any additional comments? Ms. Buckner, you want to say something? Six point zero one. I don't recall, was that on our? Okay. Six point zero one is the financial assistance program. Um, the committee is, uh, two board members who review applications for financial assistance. And what has been granted is two thousand nine hundred dollars for the two applicants that were presented. And of course, we always want to thank our, um, the people who support public education through donations, our partners, our community partners. All right, did it pop up yet? Did it calculate up here? Did I miss? Yours didn't come up? Maybe that's why. Who, who, who's not voting yet? Dr. Sly, do you see your voting? And that passes. Anything, Dr. Lewis?
Yes, just a couple of things. We'll be meeting with our medical panel this week to further discuss, uh, where we are with our mask policy. Uh, one of the things you may recall as a re, condition of us taking the layer off of the, uh, that allowed us to, uh, revise our quarantine guidance based on Department of Public Health. Uh, revised guidance, we were able to allow more students to stay in school as long as we kept the mask policy in place. However, now, as I mentioned last week, the vaccine is now available for those families who are interested and willing to, uh, provide that for their children. Uh, we are moving toward, uh, a mask optional at some point as soon as we talk with the medical panel and clear us to do that. But we want to encourage all the parents who are considering that, give yourselves plenty of time to give the vaccine and for it to become fully, um, in full efficacy during, uh, the holiday break so that, uh, once that does become an option, we can move forward on that. Secondly, um, want to just share with everyone, just something that the after-school program at Clubview Elementary, in light of the season, we have upcoming with Thanksgiving. There, these were made in the after-school programs, so with Fab Arts, just want to share that. Also, I'm very pleased to share with you that, uh, we have so many wonderful educational leaders in our district. Uh, and I wanted to share with you that we were notified last Friday that the Georgia Association of Educational Leaders has approved two of our projects to, uh, be presented, uh, presentations at the state conference in January, um, focusing on the Department of Teaching and Learning and Department of Information Services and our personalized learning effort. Also, student services on our M T S S, Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, and how that's being utilized and implemented in our district to assist families and students, uh, in various capacities and support for students. So very proud of the fact that we have so many leaders being able to be distinguished and presenting our community in a very positive light. Also, uh, you all know we do have Thanksgiving coming up next week. I'm sure everybody's well aware of that. Um, but I also want to remind everyone that it does mean that students are out. Uh, so please be very careful and cautious out there. And, and also want to thank all the parents, uh, as you may recall, we had a virtual learning day this past Friday in preparation for the potential of bad weather that would allow us to conduct school regardless whether we're in school here physically in schools, uh, in our schools or at home. And I'm very pleased to share that based on all the feedback we received from parents and from schools, it was very successful for our first one. So I want to thank everyone for your cooperation, uh, to make that a successful event for us. And again, just want to wish everyone a very, very happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much. Wishing all of our families, uh, very happy Thanksgiving. One other thing? Got to hold on that one. We'll do that in December. Thank you for reminding us, though. All right. All right. That was a motion to adjourn. Good night. Happy Thanksgiving. All in favor, wave. Good night. Good night. Happy Thanksgiving.